Okay. You should be good to go.
I'm good.
All right, well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this Tuesday, April sixteenth, public meeting of the Board of Garrett County Commissioners. And welcome, a full house here at the courthouse and anybody that's tuning in online. If everyone would please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then Pastor Crowell will lead us in the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every being justice for all.
Put your bags with me, please. Lord God, we give you thanks for this day. We give you thanks for the warmth and beauty that we see popping up with spring. Thank you, Father God, for the way that you have blessed our region with many resources with all its people. Pray, Father, God, that as we think about the agenda today, that you would give wisdom to the commissioners and grant them insight into what's going on economically and socially. Pray, Father, with the agenda in mind for the children of our region, pray that they might be safe and protected, that they be raised with wisdom, Lord, and according to your ways. We thank you for the businesses that are going to be celebrated and remembered. Pray, Father, you continue to bless our region with that as well, because we know that it helps people. We thank you, Father, for this good day. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Please be seated. Mr. Knoll, any additions, deletions, corrections to public meeting agenda?
No, so there are none.
Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
No.
We have a second.
Second.
Motion, a second agenda approved by mutual consent. Everybody got a copy of the minutes in advance of the meeting? Are there any additions, corrections, concerns with the minutes? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve.
So.
Motion, we have a second.
Second.
Minutes approved by mutual consent. We have several proclamations to give out at the beginning of the agenda here. And we will start with National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week for April the fourteenth through the twentieth. And I'm going to invite those folks up that are here to receive this. I think we have some folks here. So Kenny, if you guys want to come up, just come on up here. And we do have a proclamation to offer for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical services personnel is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical services personnel is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who call Garrett County Public Safety Communication Center, whereas public safety telecommunicators are the vital link for police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical services by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas public safety telecommunicators of Garrett County Public Safety Communication Center have contributed greatly to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, whereas each public safety telecommunicator exhibits compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their duties, and is ready to provide service to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days per year. Whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of telecommunicators by designating National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Garrett County, Maryland. Now therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of April fourteenth through the twentieth, 2024, as National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week in Garrett County, Maryland, issued the sixteenth day of April 2024, signed by Commissioners Savage, Titchnell, and myself. And let me be the first to say, thank you all very much for what you do. We are the grateful community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to say anything? You got your speech ready?
No, I didn't make a speech, guys, but we all enjoy what we do. Nobody wants to take that call when there's an emergency. We hope everybody never needs us, but we are here 24/7. If you do need us, I've got a crew of, there's 13 of us total, and I've got some good dispatchers, and I'm proud of all of them.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thank you. Next up, we have the National Day of Prayer proclamation, and I thank Pastor Rexroth, Pastor Crowell, if you guys will come up. So this proclamation for the National Day of Prayer, lift up the word, light up the world for May 2nd, 2024. For you are my lamp, O Lord, and my God lightens my darkness; for by you I can run against a troop, and by my God I can leap over a wall. This God, his way is perfect; the word of the Lord proves true; he is a shield for all those who take refuge in him. 2 Samuel 22, verse 29 through 31. Whereas we are richly blessed to have by law a national day of prayer in our country each year, and whereas throughout history Americans have lifted up fervent prayers to God on behalf of our nation, from the first gatherings of our founding fathers, elected officials have prayed and entreated those who serve and represent to join them in prayer, and whereas the National Day of Prayer has not only been part of our heritage since it was declared by the First Continental Congress in 1775, but it is a public law established by the United States Congress in 1952, approved by a joint resolution and amended by Congress and President Reagan in 1988, affirming that it is essential for us as a nation to pray, and directing the President of the United States to set aside and proclaim the first Thursday of May annually as the National Day of Prayer. Now therefore, we, the Board of Garrett County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim Thursday, May 2nd, 2024, as the day of prayer in Garrett County, and do commend this observation to all of our citizens. In witness thereof, we, the Board of Garrett County Commissioners, set our hands and caused the seal of Garrett County, Maryland, to be affixed this sixteenth day of April in the year of our Lord, 2024, signed by Commissioners Savage, Titchnell, and myself. And I will present this to you.
Thank you.
And thank you, guys, for all that you do, and I know you do a little event downtown, which we appreciate. And do you have anything you'd like to say?
We will be having National Day of Prayer at St. Paul's at noon for May the 2nd. It will be on the radio, WMSG and WKHJ, and it will be on St. Paul's Facebook page. And you all are invited. Everybody's invited to come.
And we have several members from social services here for Child Abuse Prevention Month. So ladies, if you'd like to come up, you're easy to spot. We do have this proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month for April 2024. Whereas child abuse and neglect are a complex and ongoing problem in our society affecting many children in Garrett County, and whereas every child is entitled to be loved, cared for, nurtured, feeling secure, and be free from verbal, sexual, emotional, and physical abuse and neglect, and whereas Garrett County has dedicated individuals and organizations who work daily to counter the problem of child maltreatment, and to help parents obtain the assistance they need, and whereas due to the combined efforts of Garrett County Department of Social Services, the State's Attorney's Office, Maryland State Police, Garrett County Sheriff's Department, Garrett County Board of Education, Garrett County Health Department, participating in multidisciplinary approaches with the Child Advocacy Center, and whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships among families, social service agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community, now therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Garrett County, do hereby proclaim April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Garrett County, and call upon all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to prevent child abuse thereby strengthening communities in which we live. In witness whereof, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Garrett County, have heretofore set our hands and caused the seal of Garrett County to be affixed here to this document this sixteenth day of April in the year of our Lord, 2024, signed by Commissioners Titchnell, Savage, and myself. And thank you all very much for what you do.
Excellent. Thank you. No, just a special thanks to our partners. We have amazing partners through the State's Attorney's Office, local law enforcement agency, Board of Health Department, and all the other community partners out there that kind of keep us going. If you see something, say something. Our intake number line to call to report child abuse is 301-533-3005. So, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
So it is with great pleasure that the next item on the agenda is a special recognition. I'm going to invite Connor up as we get ready to recognize Rush Services for 40 years of service in Garrett County. And Connor, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Paul. I appreciate it. And I've got a big crowd, so I'm going to do some shameless self-promotion today. I am, again, Connor Norman. I'm your Business Development Specialist with Garrett County Business Development. I use the acronym, but I'm afraid that's just as long. It's so good to have everyone here today. I think we're going to be celebrating a fantastic business that, quite honestly, of the many businesses we've had up there, I can't tell you how many positive and wonderful things I've heard in the stories that I've been told about the business we're honoring today. To tell you a little bit about our milestone program, around two years ago, with the help of our commissioners here, we brought on the milestone program as a way of surrounding our businesses to celebrate their big deal moments. And we have an incredibly big deal today as we celebrate 40 years of Rush Services in our community. They are a fantastic organization that, again, I can't tell you how many good things I've heard about them. Everything from them abandoning parades to rush out to help save a business in need to the many times they've gone out in the cold and helped with broken and leaky and frozen pipes. They certainly have been a steward of their namesake. They rush out to help and support our community. All of our small businesses are an integral part of what we do. They form the backbone of what we are as a community, and they really are a great reflection of that. I would like to invite Rush Services up here and turn it over to Mr. Paul Edwards to read the proclamation in celebration of Rush Services 40 years.
So again, it is with great pleasure that we can provide this Commissioner's commendation to Rush Services on their 40th anniversary. We, the Board of County Commissioners of Garrett County, Maryland, and citizens of Garrett County are happy to join together to extend our sincerest congratulations to Rush Services on its 40th anniversary. Since 1983, the Rush family and their team of professionals at Rush Services has worked tirelessly providing top-notch HVAC, plumbing, and electrical services in Garrett County and the surrounding region. Attention to detail and customer service has earned Rush Services a reputation for quality and outstanding service in the community for which they serve. Congratulations not only on this milestone, but also on the exemplary work and professionalism of the past 40 years. May these years be an inspiration for continued success, signed by Commissioners Savage, Titchnell, and myself. And I would also just like to add, and I think I speak on all of our behalf, you know, it's nice to recognize businesses that do more than just business. It's nice that Rush Services in particular, you see their signs at the Little League fields, they're sponsoring activities for kids, they sponsored the Hot Stove Team, they're involved in organizations across the county, they're employing apprentices from the high school as we speak, and it's just great to be able to recognize businesses that do more for the community than just fix HVAC and plumbing, which they do do an excellent job of, but that they're also part of the community in which they serve. So it is very nice to be able to present this for you on behalf of the commissioners and all here.
Thank you.
Anything you guys would like to say?
Just want to say, I mean, it's a pleasure to accept this. Unfortunately, I can't say the last 40 years were all fun and games, but when you start a business like this, you don't really expect, you don't know where to go. But it's been a great honor and pleasure to be with you all for 40 years, and we're anticipating and hoping the growth for the next 40 years. Younger generation, by the way. Thank you all very much.
If you guys would stay up here for a picture, I'd also like to bring up, we have some officials from our Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Andrew Pike, the President, Mr. Nick Sharps, if you'd like to come up for a picture.
You can stay up, sir. You'll get Jason. You want Jason up there?
Sure.
Thank you, guys. Congratulations.
All right, the next item on the agenda, we do need to pass a resolution to approve and execute the 2024 Garrett County Tax Sale and date and time. So I will introduce, for the pleasure of the Board, Resolution Number 2024-4, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Garrett County, Maryland, a body politic and corporate governing body of Garrett County, for the purpose of setting the date and time of the tax sale under Code 14-808 of the Tax Property Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland. Whereas the Article of Annotated Code of Maryland empowers the county to set the date and time of the tax sale, whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Garrett County, in accordance with provisions of the Act, does hereby set the date and time of the county tax sale to be held as an online auction at garret.marylandtaxsale.com as the following: Timeline: Registration opens Tuesday, May 1st, 2024 at 10:00 a.m. Registration closes Friday, May 17th, 2024 at noon. Cannot bid unless registered by noon on May 17th. Registration fee is refundable Friday, May 17th, due by 4:00 p.m. Tax sale bidding opens Monday, May 20th at 10:00 a.m. Tax sale bidding closes Friday, the 24th. Bidding closes in five property batches beginning at 10:00 a.m., 10:30 a.m., 11:00 a.m., so on. Payments are due Friday, May 24th, 2024, by 4:00 p.m. Whereas the appropriate officials of Garrett County are hereby directed to provide notice to the supervisor of the Garrett County Tax Collection Office, the date of the tax sale and the adoption of this resolution, witness the corporate name of the Board of County Commissioners of Garrett County, Maryland, by Paul C. Edwards, the Chairman, attested by Kevin G. Knoll, the County Administrator, or County Administrator, this sixteenth day, April 2024. Are there any questions? And Mr. Knoll, we'll make sure that, in particular, Republican gets a copy of this to publish. If anybody else is here interested in this particular item and you'd like a copy of this so you have the dates and times, just let us know. We'll make sure you get it, and it'll be posted online. If there are no questions, do we have a motion to approve Resolution 2024-4?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second question on the motion. All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, we have some bid items. Mr. Knoll, what do you have for us?
Yes, sir. This is, I just lost my place here. This is bid number 240328, Garrett County Community Action Roof Replacement. We received three bids. Tri-State Roofing in the amount of $67,180. Construction Insight LLC in the amount of $94,436. And Roofers in the amount of $191,569. The recommendation is to award the bid number 240328 to the apparent low bidder, Tri-State Roofing, in the amount of $67,180.
Questions? This within budget?
Yes, sir, it is.
If there are no questions, can I receive a motion to approve bid number 24-0328 for the Garrett County Community Action Roof Replacement to Tri-State Roofing for $67,180?
Make the motion and accept it.
We have a motion, we have a second. Motion and a second. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, we do have the Appalachian Regional Commission proposed projects. I think Cindy's here. Cindy will present those requests for the pleasure of the Board. So Cindy, thanks for coming, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appalachian Regional Commission funding is for economic business development and job creation, and we have a competitive solicitation each year to secure funding. And I'll give a brief overview of the request, and I'll give an opportunity for entities to be able to provide additional detail on each project. We have the Garrett Regional Medical Center requesting $250,000 for operating room equipment purchase. We have the Town of Oakland requesting $483,000 for the Oakland Water System improvements. Garrett College is requesting $45,000 for its radiologic technology program. Garrett County Public Schools is requesting $100,000 for the Northern and Southern Garrett High School multi-passenger vehicle apprenticeship transportation program. Garrett County Planning is requesting $150,000 for the Deep Creek Watershed. And then we also have the Garrett County Department of Community Development requesting $300,000 for the affordable housing on Springs Road. And the Board of County Commissioners has a deadline of May 10th to submit a rank listing to the Tri-County Council of Western Maryland, where there's regional ranking of all these projects. So I'm going to ask, is there any representatives of Garrett Regional Medical Center present today? Okay, I didn't see you, Dr. Picco. So look forward and add a little bit more detail to that equipment. And there's Kimmy Scott. Sorry, this is.
Can I email you?
Yep.
Sir? Good to see you all. Yeah. So do I have a presentation?
I think so. Let me.
Okay. Sorry. Thank you.
That's the wrong one. Let me get the right one here.
So the hospital's about to embark on a pretty significant renovation of our operating room. In my time here, the hospital has actually created around 200 jobs for this community through the growth of services and new services. And we actually have to go through this project now, basically, we actually were planning on this project back in '21. And when the pandemic hit, what happened is, and many people don't realize this, but the hospital operates on a global budget, and it's capped. And what happens is, is that if we think of that as a flat line, as our volumes go up, we lose money because we're only paid to care for a certain number of patients. As their volumes go down, we actually would make more money out of the hospital because our costs and whatnot then would also go down associated to that. So we were unable to execute this project during the course of the pandemic because our volumes went through the roof, and we had patients in hallways. We, I've never seen anything like that in my career as a healthcare administrator. And the hospital lost somewhere around $6 million over the last, over those two years. And so it depleted our cash for our operations through the pandemic. And so we actually had to go back to the state for some great relief to be able to care for our patients, which we did ultimately get, but now we're trying to build up our cash reserves back up. And so there are some pieces of equipment that we're looking to help fund through this process with the operating rooms. It would be, I would really love to show you what that, what that project is going to entail, so we're hoping to get this up. And right now, I'm sort of just, you know, hanging, you know, doing my thing, you know, right? But the hospital has, I mean, I've been here 10 years now, and the hospital has enjoyed a tremendous amount of support from this community, and we've grown quite a bit. And this year, it marks our sixth year as being a top 100 hospital in the United States for world community hospitals.
That's the last one I've got.
And it also marks our sixth period in a row where we are rated a grade A in the LEAPRAV patient safety scores in the country. And so for us to achieve that for the small hospital that we are is pretty significant. And we've been working really hard. I think, I think that the one thing that will always resonate with me as the hospital administrator is that in the end, we may miss the market times, but our goal will never, never waver from that goal, that we would care for every single patient that comes through the doors of our hospital like they were members of our own family. And I think that's the most important thing that I could say is that we will never stop trying to make that a reality for every single patient that we have. And I take it very seriously when we don't hit that button. And I've made it my job to call every patient that lodges a complaint about their service or care. I call those patients personal and speak with them.
I don't think we have your presentation, which is fine. I don't think that's going to preclude you from being funded, so I don't think we need to worry about that. But we do appreciate you coming, and I think we have a pretty good idea of what you're trying to win.
Yeah, we're, the truth of the matter is, I need $2.5 million to make it happen. And I don't want to, we don't want to take up the whole money for all the other organizations. So we kept it to $250,000. It's a match against equipment that is needed for the OR to make this project happen. Essential sterile, reprocessing areas really antiquated, and so we're going to clean all that up and rebuild it.
Okay, great.
And I will have completed my mission that every square foot of the hospital will have been renovated during my time here.
That's impressive.
Yeah. You've done a great job at the hospital. Thank you.
Mark, can I ask something? In the presentation, I apologize, I emailed it before I got here, and we were sitting here, and we feel good. Anyway, hold it until tomorrow.
It's not a WBU firewall.
Yeah. I didn't hear what Mark said, but basically, we just have four rooms, and one of them is not small enough to accommodate a lot of the technology you need in surgeries today. So we're creating, we're growing this suite space. We'll have four symmetrical suites to equal five, so we can do ortho and.
Actually, one suite will be sized larger than all the rest to accommodate orthopedics, and then the others will be symmetrical with each other. So yeah, but that's the plan. It's a huge project. It's really a close to $7.5 million project. And so, you know, at a time where we're trying to replete our caches from the pandemic, our cash flow, our cash on hand from the pandemic, every little bit counts.
All right, great.
I apologize.
No, don't worry.
It's all good.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you all. Good to see you all.
You too.
And I know we have representatives from the Town of Oakland. Jay Moyer is here, and also Doug Devlin, if you want to make a few comments about the Oakland Water System improvements, requesting $483,000.
Sure. Thank you for having me. I just, I'm going to go over my summary sheet here, that we've been working with the Town of Oakland to address some municipal water shortfalls. And the problems to address are the volume and pressure inadequacy in the western service area of town. We actually commissioned Pillar to go out and look at the, do some testing, flow tests, and do an analysis of the system. And there's not enough capacity particularly for our new fire protection mandates that the state of Maryland has actually adopted based on the new National Building Code, that every new residential unit has to have fire protection in that unit. There's another problem is the inability to service the existing tank on Crook's Crest without a backup. There's, the existing facility is on inspection, is found to have some inadequacies that was done, I guess, back in early 2000s, and it's really problematic without some sort of supplemental backup to take that system offline, to repair it, and that's going to be required in the next several years, maybe not several years. And then we also think that because of these problems, it's basically stopped any kind of meaningful growth in the community in its tracks. So it's somewhat of an economic development issue as well as a safety issue. So the study by Pillar basically confirmed the inadequacies of the system. Its findings require a new tank and pump station with additional controls, and it also included a preliminary estimate for that work. And the proposed solution was to assemble various funding sources. And the proposed solution was to assemble various funding sources, to do a phased approach with engineering, trying to get funds for the engineering first, and then actual, get actual design and construction documents, the price, to get a real price on, on a particular design that satisfies all the criteria, and then ultimately to address the deficiencies in the Brooks Crest tank. So, there was an ARC grant submitted for that, or an, an application submitted for that as a first step to get the, this, the design process going forward.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks.
And I know we have representatives from Garrett College today. This old Dr. Midcap and also.
I'm gonna take this one.
Okay, Krista.
Yeah. Hi, everybody. I'm Krista Bowser. I'm the VP of the End of Affairs at Garrett College, and we are excited to be requesting some funds from ARC to start a radiologic technicians program at Garrett College. It'll be our first, there we go, it'll be our, thank you. It'll be our first allied health for credit program that the college has ever had. There's a shortage in rad techs around the area, and some statistics from the whole United States, about two hundred and sixty thousand jobs vacancy. Mark Picco from Garrett Regional and Michelle Marks from UPMC are both commenting to us about the need for these kinds of technicians. So, we're very excited to do this. This is gonna be the closest thing we can have to getting excited about allied health. This is a very expensive kind of field to get into. For Garrett College, if we can get this program, there are six other, five others, we would be the six, well, seven others, we would be. Nearest one to us is about an hour, so that would be in a different state. In Maryland, the nearest program for this is in Hakers Town, so we have some excitement to get students not to travel so far, and to perhaps bring some students from Allegheny County, perhaps up the mountain to us. Allegheny did have a program, they closed that program several years back, so we're excited to get this going. We have about a three-year project. This is year one, the planning phase. We're asking for a little bit of money to get started building out our facility, to bring on a coordinator, not looking for a full salary for anybody, but to get some supplies. We're gonna bring in students hopefully for the fall of twenty-twenty-five or twenty-six school year, getting about twelve to fifteen students per cohort, getting them two years to get out. We do plan to bring a coordinate every year once we start. We do need to seek some certification other than just upping this program. We're not West Virginia, we can't just do that. We have to get our middle state commission to approve this, we have to get some JR certifications. This group has to have special certifications to work in Maryland, so we will be striving to earn that, hope that first graduating class can be credited for the state for student employment. So, that's pretty much all I have about that. So, we're very excited, and we appreciate the opportunity to, to seek our first year some funding.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And do we have representatives from the Garrett County Public Schools, perhaps? Richard?
Yeah. Rich West wants the Garrett County Public Schools. Ours is real simple. We want to purchase two multi-passenger vehicles. There are about ten to twelve passengers that are real comparable to a head start vehicle for the school system. We have one in each high school. Primarily, we're gonna try to transport students from apprentice opportunities while the instructional extracurricular. The blueprint for Maryland's future, which you'll hear a lot about tonight, I'm sure, emphasizes the force of expanded apprenticeship opportunities for the high school students throughout Maryland. To ensure the successful implementation of such programs, Maryland State Department of Education along with other agencies are required to promote and oversee them. PCPS believes that the addition of these two vehicles is an important step for us to meet that. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And Garrett County Planning, I think.
Yeah. I'm here. I'm De'ara Wickfield with Garrett County Planning Office, and we're requesting a project I'm calling strengthening Deep Creek Watershed Stewardship for Sustainable Development. So, we just signed the MOU for the Deep Creek Lake Watershed with MDE and the county and, yeah, MDE, DNR and the county. And each agency has provided funding for a watershed coordinator position, so we're taking that, that funding for this position and using ARC funding to leverage it to implement some of the projects in the Deep Creek Lake Water, Deep Creek, Deep Creek Lake Watershed Management Plan.
Where do I go with the term?
Yeah, thank you. So, so this project, it will revive, but also expand upon the efforts in the watershed management plan, and we aim to focus on sustainable growth through ecotourism and outdoor recreation, as well as community engagement to, for like environmental conservation and improving water quality and projects related to that. So, we're hoping we'll get partnerships from the Watershed Foundation and the Chamber of Commerce and the POA in order to develop this program. And I'm really hoping this watershed, watershed coordinator comes on board, we can develop the education before we submit a final application to ARC, we'll have that finalized. So, yeah, that's essentially what that project is. So, yeah, so thank you for considering it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Garrett County Department of Community Development. Steve, do you want me to just read a summary?
If you'd like to, go ahead, that'd be fun.
Okay, all right. Implementing the town grants built sustainable communities planning initiatives will enhance and maintain job creation, economic growth, and workforce housing with the potential for amplified returns resulting from its recent designation of an opportunity zone. This area on Springs Road, Greensville, Maryland is designated as town center and located just off the national road adjacent Interstate sixty-eight, a prime area for regional growth. This public-private partnership will extend utilities to the site, construct infrastructure such as utilities to lots, streets, sidewalks. With the infrastructure in place, the developer will be able to construct affordable housing. The project will consist of a single-family homes priced between one hundred and seventy-five thousand and two hundred and fifty thousand, duplex homes priced between one hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred thousand, and possibly condominium homes priced between one hundred and twenty-five thousand and one hundred and seventy-five thousand. So, that's, that covers all the projects.
Okay, thank you, Cindy. Appreciate it. Thank you, Cindy. And so, the next steps on that, as Cindy articulated very well, all these projects are Garrett submission. ARC represents Garrett, Allegheny, and Washington County. These submissions will be combined, and then representatives from those three counties will get together and rank them in order for the whole region, and that will determine what gets funded and what does not. And we should know that in the next couple of months. Next item on the agenda, we have a request from the local Scenic and Wild Rivers, the Yawk Advisory Board Chairman, Don Sebold, who is with us to share some comments with the board. So, Don, I'll go ahead and invite you up to the podium, and thanks for coming in. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you for allowing me to come, and, and I've been on the Yakagany River Advisory Board for thirty-six years. I was wondering if I could get maybe a condensation?
You gotta get to forty for that.
You gotta get to forty? Okay, well, hopefully make it. Anyway, I know all of you pretty well. Ryan, I spent a lot of time in your great-grandfather's garage. And Larry, I, I think we're about the same age, so we might, we might get an award for that. And Paul, I knew your family, and so, we are, we're about their age, so I think, I think your dad snuck up into our class and took one of our ladies.
I think you're right.
Okay, well, enough of this. Okay, again, I'm, I'm Don Sebold, Chairman, and of the permanent Yakagany River Advisory Board. No, actually, I'm a member of the fourth board. I was a member of the third board and the fourth board. There was two previous boards back in the early eighties that never got off the ground for various reasons. There was a lot of controversy, basically, they just couldn't keep it together. So, and another thing, during the time that the management plan was being written, the plan was started, the management plan was started in nineteen eighty-six, and it took us ten years to get that done. And we did that with the help of DNR. And the DNR Plan Coordinator of the Wild Rivers, Scenic and, the Scenic and Wild River Rivers Review Board was coordinated by John Wilson, who spent the whole time with us. He did a lot of work. And it was, we went through a lot of things during the management plan being developed. It was, there was good times and bad times, and we had some pretty interesting times under different issues. At the end of that ten-year development, we, you know, we were not paid. We were, we were sort of volunteered, and I, being a property owner along the Yakagany, became a member, was chosen to be on the board by DNR in the Scenic and Wild Rivers Review Board. At the end of the ten years and the development of the plan, when it was accepted, our payment was a chicken dinner. We had a chicken dinner for ten years of service, so not that that's a bad thing. But at that time, during the board development, we considered a state board. At the end of the, at the time the board was, or the management plan was accepted, we became a county board, and we became a permanent Yakagany River Advisory Board. Not all of us, unfortunately, not all of us are around anymore. Anyway, there's some that's been here for quite a while. I have two in the audience, the county representative, De'ara Wickfield, maybe she stepped out, and Roger DeVal, DeVal, Zeville, I'm sorry. I don't know why, I locked that in my mind. But anyway, Roger represents voters in the, on the advisory board. And the board, the way I see the board, starting in the management plan on page fifty-eight, the county, I'll, I'll read just a little bit. The county serves as an important management role, serves an important management role in the study area of the scenic section of the Yakagany River. Their greatest responsibilities lies in developing and implementing the comprehensive plans and zoning ordinances to manage land uses within the study area of the scenic portion of the river in a way that is not detrimental to purpose of which the Yakagany was designated. I started on the wrong page, I'm sorry. Actually, page fifty-eight, I'm looking for that. No, I had it here. We'll get it. There we go. Okay. The purpose of the permanent, this is on page fifty-eight of the management plan, the permanent, the purpose of the permanent Yakagany River Advisory Board is to monitor the effective implementation of the plan on a continuing basis. The advisory board is key to citizens' input into management decision, and it must be the primary entity through which users discuss their differences and agree upon joint actions to protect and preserve the scenic and wild qualities of the river. It is recommended that the advisory board contain the following represented, and, and the board is made up of a cross-section of the county and government. Three members who own land contiguous to that portion of the river designated as scenic and wild rivers in the Scenic and Wild Rivers Act. Two county residents who own land that is not contiguous to the Yakagany River, and one member representing the Garrett County Government. And we've always had a member, as a matter of fact, we had three commissioners on the advisory board when the plan was being form, formulated. We had Elvin Groves, we had Ernie Gray, and Brenda Futter. So, they were all very active on the board, and I had a lot in guiding the plan, so. Headed here. I don't know how I can turn this upside down so quick. Again, I, I've been with the board a long time. It was just a matter of, I felt it was my duty to do that. After the, the, the plan was accepted, the permanent local scenic and wild Yakagany River Board was formed to oversee and assist the county and implement the plan as written. Again, page fifty-eight starts that in the management plan. My feeling, and probably, I, I don't think I'm speaking out of turn to the board, but the county to say the advisory board has no function to the county is disingenuous and contrary to the plan. You know, when we were told that we had no function to the county, it was, it was boring on being insulting, so it was insulting to us because we have put in, there has been a lot of time put in, in this plan, so. When we get that out, I'm really hoping that there's some way that we can get back with the board and be productive and help bring things to light that need to be, and be informed of what's going on in the, the quarter, and make recommendations that are in line with the management plan. So, that's basically where I'm at. I did introduce everybody that's here. We are now two short, two members short on the board, and we're hoping that that gets rectified, and we would like to have a complete board. And again, we would like to work with the commissioners. And to me, I know the commissioners have stated that we need to send recommendations to the Scenic and Wild Rivers Review Board, but I've read things in the plan where basically we formulate things for the county and for the state to present to the Scenic and Wild Rivers Review Board. And as you know, probably Paul, Chairman, I don't know if that's set in stone, are, you will, you are a member of that board, so. You know, it's kinda like me, and, you know, I don't understand a lot of things, but when we go to the post office and I need to send a letter from McHenry to Axon, it goes to Baltimore and comes back, so, you know, I mean, what, what are we doing here, you know? So, I, that's pretty much what I have to say, and I, I really hope that we can get together, and we need to be productive, so. And by productive, I mean protecting the yacht quarter, so that's it.
All right. Thank you, Don, for coming in. Anybody have any questions for, for Don? To add some context to this and, and maybe some direction and clarify a few things, I do appreciate you taking my call the other day, so I want to thank you for that. I believe, Steve, you probably know this, so I'll ask you, is the, the Yawk still the only Maryland wild and scenic river?
The Yawk, there, there are thirteen scenic rivers in the state of Maryland, there's only one wilder, and that is the Yawk. wild river, and that is the Yoc.
Okay. And I, I say that, when this was created, Comer, or the, the law stated that there had to be an advisory committee to get the program off the ground. That was created. The way we read, and this is just for clarification, the way we read the law, once it was implemented, that being the wild and scenic river designation, it, the law says the county may, not shall, create a board to be the advisory committee. The Board of Garrett County Commissioners at that time created that board. And I think they met a couple of times, with the last time being in two thousand and six. A lot of time passed, for whatever reason, there, there weren't any meetings, and the Yoc, the, the Swallow Falls Bridge came up. And it was requested by DNR to the county that we get the board together to discuss that, which we did. There was a difference of opinion between the board and county commissioners on what to do there, but that, you know, that's the way it goes sometimes. And, and then from that point, there was some confusion, question of what do we do next? The board hadn't met for a very long time. It came together for what we viewed as a specific purpose, to look at the bridge, they made a recommendation, then the question is, what do we do after that? It was a full board at that particular time, and Don's absolutely correct that there are two vacancies there. As we've talked about this, I speak for the commissioners, certainly respect the decision of previous Board of Commissioners to create an advisory board, and we will maintain that out of respect to them and for the people such as Don that have served a very long time. There are some very dedicated and passionate people on that board that care about the wild and scenic river. I know Roger's been very involved in that for a long time, and, and, you know, we certainly respect that as well. So we are prepared, I think now, to go ahead and appoint the final two members to the board, based on some requests that we've received from the public. In one of those positions is the Soil Conservation Districts, they have a, a spot, and another is a, a property owner in the, in the corridor. Before we do that, looking at the direction of the board, as we've talked about this, and Don, this is, as Chairman, for you, I think clarifies some things and will help as you guys move forward. It, it struck me, I think all of us, that things came up in relation to the yacht corridor that, on the surface, didn't really involve the yacht corridor. And then, as the committee got into looking at it, they felt it did involve the yacht corridor and wanted to meet and talk about that, perfectly fine. We do not feel, certainly can have the conversation if, if the board disagrees, the other boards that exist, albeit most of them are state boards, but the, the premise would be the same. PRB would be an example of that, which is, is set up to advise on all things Deep Creek We feel that it's the board's responsibility to stay informed of what's going on and meet and talk about those things, and come back to us to serve the note of what I just said. We don't know everything that's going on that might impact the corridor. It would be that board's job to analyze such things and then advise us on that, or hey, you might want to think about this, because this could impact the corridor because of A, B, or C. I think, from the correspondence, albeit not much, that I saw from the board, the question was, should we be giving direction, or should the board be giving direction back to us? I think it's our belief, correct me if I'm wrong, that that should be driven by the committee, not by the commission. So that would be the direction that, that I would lay out for that. And then any, you know, and then we can meet like this, or, you know, anything, time that something comes up that needs a meeting, we can certainly facilitate, or if it's just a letter, or an email, or, or whatever, just something to be aware of. We do think there's some value that can be had there, and, and that's why we'll reappoint the full board and, and move forward. I do want to say one more time, though, we do appreciate the effort and the time that people put in. I know there was some question about the fidelity of the board when, when we disagreed on the bridge, but I, I don't want to make that seem like it wasn't appreciated, that people actually put time into it and, and, you know, did some work there. We certainly respect that. With that, unless anyone has anything else to say.
Paul, can I say one more thing?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I would like for the board not to give these directions, but we need to bring things out that gets involved with the corridor, you know, we want, we need, we need to decide whether it is valid, not valid. You know, we don't only care with what you do, but we'd like to get the right information to the people.
I agree a hundred percent, absolutely. If there's nothing else from the Board of Commissioners, we do have two names for consideration. We'll take them both at the same time to appoint to the Yoc River Advisory Board, and that is, the Soil Conservation District has put forward Nevin Sines as the nominee from that group, and then another property owner, Larry Shue, has requested to be on the board. I'll submit that for consideration to the board, and if you have any comments, or if we have a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion that we approve those people for the board.
We have a motion, we have a second. Both willing, sir, a motion and a second, questionable motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So, Don, we'll get their contact information to you, so that you have it, and if you want to reach out to them, and I think you have a meeting coming up next week, Thursday, so that they would be eligible to sit at that time. Thanks again, appreciate it. Before we go to public comment, which is next, just a couple of announcements. Our next public meeting is May sixth here at four o'clock. Outside of the public meeting agenda, we'll have budget presentations by the Ruth and Lo Library, Chamber of Commerce, and Community Action. So that'll be May sixth here. Before we close the public meeting and go to the budget presentations, tonight we have the Garrett College, the Health Department, and the Board of Education. Everyone in attendance is welcome to stay for those, if, if you would like. Are there any other public comments on the public meeting agenda?
Yeah, my name is Steve Storke, I'm a property owner in the wild yacht. I'd like to applaud you gentlemen for continuing the legacy of commissioners in filling, in filling those positions on board. Every opening since nineteen ninety-seven has been filled, even though they were convened, and I appreciate you continuing that, because as a property owner, and Sierra has left, I'm very proud that I've earned the wealth of Sierra and developed a map of the ownership of the wild yacht. Forty percent of the wild yacht is still owned by private individuals like myself, over a hundred forty people, and we have no representation with the state who governs what we can do with our land. That representation is in the advisory board. By, by the management plan that's written, so you have allowed us now to have that continued representation, and I greatly appreciate it. In twenty eighteen, Debbie Carpenter wrote a letter to the commissioners. They were asked whether the advisory board had a role in advising on the bridge, Swallow Falls. And Debbie's letter said that they didn't think it was worth the time to contact the advisory board, to convene the advisory board, to have that communication. That's just one example of, and you know, I'm, I'm the guy, I'm the voice that says, don't do anything against this management plan. That was an early opportunity, and there have been numerous early opportunities to engage that board, to make those types of decisions, and I hope that this is a partnership between commissioners, the county, and the board, to get that early input and to have those conversations in those board meetings. I've been excited to see the last, you know, years since we lobbied heavily, to get that meeting to, to occur, that members of the farm community, members of business community, members of the property owners, from all different views, have come to that meeting to express their views, and I hope that happens. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you. If I can have a motion to adjourn the public meeting.
Oh, yeah.
All right, the public meeting is adjourned, we want to thank everybody for coming. For those of you that want to stick around, we are going to have our budget presentation starting right now, and we'll begin with Garrett College. Larry.
How are you doing?
I'm good.
Thank you. Commissioners, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to present our FY twenty-five budget request. I do want to note that we have board members Karen Myers, Jason Rush, and Gary Rudell here with us today. We also have Dean Dallas Warlet, who was our chief fiscal officer, and who was responsible for leading us through a challenging budget process. Did I say challenging budget process? Yes. It's kind of been an understatement. Garrett College received an eight-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-dollar cut in operating spending in FY twenty-five compared to FY twenty-four from the state of Maryland. It was the largest percentage cut of any community college in the state, and it comes on the heels of a fourteen-point-five percent increase in FY twenty-four credit hours. So essentially, the state of Maryland has told us to serve many more students with much less money. And so that was a challenge. And to this point, how we have responded to that challenge, our budget managers responded by crafting a budget that included all mandatory increases, things like the resetting of our Laker Hall loan, which occurs every three years mortgage rate, increased costs for healthcare, increased costs for audit, liability insurance, software subscriptions, all the things that we need to do on a regular basis to run the college, that, like everything else, go up year after year. They also funded year three of our board-approved compensation plan, and almost three-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars in the state cuts. That left about five-hundred-thousand dollars of the state cuts to be, to be addressed, and it created quite a big ask, as I want to acknowledge from county government. What we are requesting is a nine percent general operating budget increase from the county. This would account for the remaining state cuts. It would also allow us to fund year three of the compensation plan, provide additional resources for high school dual enrollment support, including onsite faculty, and would also allow us to launch our men's soccer program, which is one of our strategic goals, to increase both enrollment and residence hall income. We are also seeking one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar increase in the Garrett County Scholarship Program. This comes after a twenty-eight percent increase in the number of high school dual enrollment credits that we have from spring twenty-three to spring twenty-four. We have, we're requesting flat funding per our agreement with the county for the Performing Arts Center, and that includes, the college is funding about sixty-thousand dollars in operating deficit, and about a hundred thousand dollars a year in PAC costs overall out of our budget, and, and are not requesting any changes in any of the agreements that we organized with all of our partners. We've also taken responsibility for PAC management, day-to-day oversight, since our relationship with GLAF changed, and have not requested any additional partner support. Our local capital request is for almost eighty-four thousand dollars to replace an eighteen-year-old utility tractor and to add a utility vehicle that can be used around campus for various projects that our in-house facility staff undertakes. Just from a visual, this will show you comparing our FY twenty-four local funding for, for the current year to FY twenty-five. I want the two increases that I mentioned in operating and in the Garrett County Scholarship Program, and also just for level-setting purposes, it also includes the one-point-two-five million dollars that the, the county approved for us in FY twenty-five that could be spent in future fiscal years for our capital projects. So we split that over twenty-four and twenty-five just for purposes, that's pretty much the way that, that will be spent, although most of it will come in FY, more than half will come in FY twenty-five. That project that I'll talk about in a second is going to run May to August, so it kind of spans two fiscal years. The four hundred, the next project that we are doing on the capital side is our four-hundred building. For those of you who are familiar with our campus, that is where our kitchen, cafe, and student lobby are, and we have a two-point-five-million-dollar project that will renovate that whole area, which was built actually in the late seventies and early eighties. And I do want to thank the commissioners, because that one-point-two-five-million dollars that the county is providing allowed us to put together a really creative financing proposal. We were using that money, we're using state facilities, renewal grant funds, and our Board of Trustees has approved accessing fund balance for the rest of that facility. And I can tell you that when you're recruiting students, you really want students and their parents to see up-to-date cafeteria and kitchen facilities. We had new student order, or, I'm sorry, we had Explore Garrett on Saturday, where a bunch of our prospective incoming freshmen were there, and before they went on the tour, I told them, you're going to see a nineteen-eighties facility when you go through there, but you're going to see a twenty-twenty-four facility when you get back in August. So I really appreciate what you have done for that. I do want to note, again, that is a steep request that we're asking for the county, and one of the things that you might logically ask is, well, what have we done to keep costs down? And I wanted to just touch on a few of those things, both keeping costs down and also to increase revenues. So between twenty twelve and twenty eighteen, Garrett College, like many, I'm sorry, between twenty twelve and twenty eighteen, we had a lot of increases in enrollment. At the end of that peak, we had, we had decreases that were similar to those across the state. As a result, we reduced our workforce by sixteen percent in a two-year period. We did most of that through attrition, and frankly, if we hadn't done that at that time, I don't know where, where we'd be sitting now with the state cuts. Something else that we did in twenty twenty, as we looked at the Garrett County Scholarship Program and realized that we were going to be funding, we were going to be having many more students in our Garrett County Scholarship Program, taking more hours than could be afforded through the CAP program, we reduced, and then we froze our in-county tuition rate. So in twenty twenty, we went from a hundred-nine dollars per credit hour for in-county students to ninety-nine dollars per credit hour for in-county students, and we've kept it frozen for five years, and that's almost unheard of in higher education nowadays. We've also identified facility needs and upgraded with strong county support. One of the things that I, I want to mention is that we have tried to renovate infrastructure in the most fiscally sustainable way possible. We've been using a lot of state facilities renewal grant funding to do things like replace HVAC systems. HVAC systems, doors, windows, flooring, things like that, so that we could push off larger full renovations. Two of our buildings, the 600 Building and the 700 Building, were coming off our 10-year facilities master plan because we've been able to do those renovations and just push them out into the out-years, into the later 2030s. We've also identified new programs that we thought could lead to additional enrollment. Sport Management is a program that has really blossomed along with our increased number of student athletes. It's a natural mix, and we're getting a lot of students who are moving into that field with a goal of going on to four-year institutions. We've changed our engineering program to make it more flexible. It used to be an electrical engineering program, and now it's general engineering, so that more students can take advantage of it and transfers to more places. Recently added a robotics and technology certificate. We've also updated programs. Computer Science, we updated in 2018, and we did it in liaison with Frostburg State University, so that all of our credits were immediate one-to-one transferred to FSU, which saves our students time and money. We also moved our paramedics program to a more flexible model, so that whereas it used to be just a workforce training program that didn't offer credit, there are now options for that to also be offered as a credit program, and we take all of the work that's done on the workforce training side and articulate it into the credit program, so that it's a seamless transfer. Students can do the equivalent of 30 credits in workforce training and then do 30 credits of their general education requirements to get their degree. We've also expanded our intercollegiate athletics program to grow full-time headcount and residence income. Just a quick recap on that. In 2018, we added wrestling, we're the only Maryland Juco in the state that has wrestling, so that has been attracting out-of-county students and out-of-state students to that. Last fall, we added women's soccer, which in this very first year with an all-freshman team, added 15 full-time students, and we will be, we expect to be at 18 to 24 this fall, and then our current plan is to add men's soccer in the fall of '25. We would be hiring a coach this year to recruit that team. Again, that's another 18 to 24 students we're hoping for, mostly out-of-county and out-of-state and residence hall residents. And even more important, given what we've seen, is that none of these students will be accessing the Garrett County Scholarship Program. So, that's going to be a really good source of income for us going forward. We've also partnered with Garrett County Public Schools to grow dual enrollment 74% over the last five years. I say this at state meetings all the time, I don't think there's a better relationship between a school system and a community college than the one that we have with Garrett County Public Schools. I think it's one of the reasons where, that we've been able to work so collaboratively on the blueprint, is because we've already been doing it for years. I know I've talked mostly fiscal and budget numbers, but at the end of the day, we're an academic institution, and the academic achievements that we've had are impressive. Just for this current year, we, MHEC puts out success indicators on a variety of subjects. We're number one in the state in transfer student performance, number one in graduation transfer rate for college-ready students, and number three in graduation transfer rate for all students. And I think those are examples of what we bring to the academic side. And I do want to mention our athletics. Our women's basketball team reached the region semifinals for the fourth consecutive year this year. Women's soccer was very competitive in their first year, and I think they're going to be a top team coming in. We have a number of, as many as a half dozen international students coming in to play women's soccer next year. Men's basketball continues to be competitive, and the wrestling team, I spoke of just earlier, we had six wrestlers qualify for nationals this year, and since we started in 2018, we've had 35 wrestlers go to the national tournament. So, we've continued to excel, I believe, in academics and athletics. And then finally, there's the community impact. I've said this in many locations, I don't think there's a community college that takes the community piece as seriously as Garrett does. We're located centrally geographically, but also just as part of the, as part of the county. The Performing Arts Center, which the county put in $4 million of local funding into, we had 25,000 visitors at 10 PAC events in its first year of operations. And I just named a few of the programs that we collaborate with the community. I Can Swim, College in Me, the robotics competitions that take place. We are a true community center, and I think that the combination of academics, athletics, and community makes us pretty special. I do want to again say, I thank you for everything that you've done for us. The other thing that I didn't mention is another wonderful gift from the state. In FY24, the second year of our turf field funding was omitted from the state budget. It had been pre-authorized, just didn't get in there. We had $550,000 of unfunded bills for the turf field, and the college agreed to float that through our fund balance. The commissioners, Senator McKay, Delegate Hindball, all kinds of people went to bat for us with the state, and they've restored that funding for FY25, so we'll be able to put that back into our fund balance. I appreciate what you've done there and all the other support that you've given to us over the years, and I thank you for considering our request in FY25, and be happy to answer any questions I could.
He had a spike.
I saw it, it's true.
Any questions for Dr. Meg Cap?
I have a couple. Knowing what the state did to funding this year, we know what the impact is, what's your gut telling you for next year, out-years, what's that funding going to look like?
There are, there are two things that I think are, that give optimism, or reason for optimism. I won't bore you with the Cade funding formula, like even those of us who've been working the system for 30 years don't understand it, but it's the way that we fund community colleges. Where the cut came this year was, we're supposed to be funded at 29% of what the four-year colleges and universities are funded, and the governor's budget cut it back to 26.5 and left open the option that that could be cut further. The compromise that was reached between the House and the Senate and the governor was that it would go back to 27.2%, which is how we got about 100 of that $900,000 back, and that that would be the tie going forward. It doesn't prevent a, another Burfa, Budget Reconciliation and Finance Act change to the formula, but both the House and the Senate feel like they've got an agreement from the governor that that's, that is the rate going forward. So, that's a good thing, that gives us some stability. The other thing is that there's going to be, one thing that came out of all this, there were many, many times when all 16th and Maryland Community Colleges' presidents were at hearings this spring to, as a show of solidarity and to explain what had happened, and it led to a conversation about the Cade formula, which was established in 1996 and has been funded twice. And two things came out of that, that we need a better funding formula than one that we can fund, you know, 200 every 30 years, but also that we need to consider things that Cade doesn't consider, which is like workforce training, credit, and things like that. So, there's going to be a study group that's going to look at that, and I don't expect it to change in FY26. I think the rules do change in FY27, but I think we may get a more realistic funding formula for community colleges.
Speaking of the formula and talking about how difficult it is to understand the Cade formula. So, maintenance of effort. I don't know that everyone realizes, we have a maintenance of effort mandate from the state for community college, much like we do for the public school system. And I'm not even going to ask you how that's figured out, because that's probably rocket science in and of itself, but my question is, do you know which buckets of money drive maintenance of effort up? So, I'm assuming general budget does, but when we're talking about, and I know that capital does not, but Scott and I were talking earlier, we don't think the scholarship money...
I'm going to point you to Dallas, I believe just the operating budget is maintenance of effort.
Is the operating budget. So, the public school system has, statewide, has an opportunity for one-time non-recurring costs. Do community colleges have the same opportunity, or is that just a public school opportunity? Meaning, if there's a one-time item that may not be capital, but it's a non-recurring cost, we can fund it without manipulating maintenance of effort? Does that exist in the community college world?
I'm going to have to double-check that. I know, for example, you mentioned capital, but also there's local funding, one-time funding that you give us. Couple of years ago, you funded a couple of our vehicles, that kind of thing, that does not get computed into. I believe we could, but I would like to research that before saying whether one-time expenses can be...
Just moving forward, as it gets harder and harder to fund everything, you know, you guys took a big hit, we didn't foresee a couple of months ago, but we're going to try to plug a gap in. We knew the blueprint was going to drive public education up significantly, and we're seeing that, and that's going to be over the next nine years. That's why I asked a question for the college of what that looks like over time. You know, any, any tool in the toolkit we have that can offset recurring costs obviously would be a benefit. I don't know what that might be, or even if it's an option, but I think it's in your best interest to look into that, because that could be something we could utilize down the road.
Well, we have a president's meeting in Annapolis on Friday, so I'm going to get with the MAC staff and get any...
Yeah, I'm just curious, it might be some, we've only used it with the public school system one time in the history of this county, that I'm aware of, maybe twice, so I think just once. And that was one of Larry and I's first years on here. It's hard to get it to meet the criteria, although I do believe they just loosened that criteria slightly for the public school system recently, so it may be something that we can look at.
We will continue and get back to you.
And I just want to end with saying, and I appreciate what you said and agree, not only do we have a great working relationship between the college and the public school system, which I do think is by far the best in the state, and we can show that in numbers, but it's true, but we also have a great working relationship between the county and the college and this public school system, and I'll say this now, but, you know, there are a lot of counties that it's always very combative. Everything between the college and the school system are competing for scarce resources, so they fight with each other. The county is trying to preserve scarce resources, so they're fighting with the public school system and the community college. We don't necessarily have that here, which I appreciate, and want to thank everybody in the room who's involved in that, because it's hard enough to try to make it work, knowing what the financial situation is. It would be unbearable trying to make it work when everybody hates each other. So, I do appreciate the working relationship, and I hope everybody realizes the rest of the state and the country doesn't necessarily work like we do. So, it is something I think we just take for granted, but appreciate the efforts on everybody's behalf.
Thank you.
All right, next up, the Health Department.
Thanks, Rich.
Thanks. Watch yourself. You might need, you might need some help.
Good afternoon, gentlemen, and, you know, I want to echo what you said, that I believe that around the state, probably the other health officers think that, boy, they wish they were the Garrett County Health Officer, because we do have a great working relationship. And it's been a little while since, since I've been the health officer, and I want to thank all of you for the support you've given me and also to the support for the Health Department, because it really is all about our staff. And so, we have the presentation, Kevin, if you'd like to put that up. And because of how late it is in the day, I will tell you this, that we're going to slide through 10 slides, that were just kind of an introduction to public health, because all of you, I believe you understand that very well. So, we're just going to cut through all of that. I did bring with me Jennifer Hare, who's our administrator, and she wanted me to remind all of you today that today is National Bean Counter Day, and so Scott, Scott asked me what I brought him, and I said, "A budget, we're going to ask for some money." So, I didn't give him a gift, really, so thank you for that. And I would also acknowledge the hard work that everybody does in the county, the Health Department, public schools, community action, the college. This budget process reminds me of somebody, you know, who's trying to paint the horses on a merry-go-round when they keep going up and down, you know, because you can't, you can't do them, you know, it's just like, it gets messy. So, next slide. Kevin, I would just remind everybody what the mission of the Health Department is, is to promote, protect, and improve the health of the citizens and visitors of Garrett County, and our vision is that Garrett County a healthier place to live, work, and play. And I believe we've done a great job with that. That's our public health accreditation. We're accredited by three different organizations. There are not very many health departments in the state that are accredited by one organization. We've been accredited by three, so I think that talks to the quality. So, the next 10 slides, you can just forward right through, Kevin, if you would. These were just some of the 10 program areas that have really positively affected health and wellness in the United States and in Garrett County. And so, these are just some of those areas, and now we're going to get down to really talking about the budget. So, what I want to, just let you know that I'm going to start off with the negative stuff, and then I'm going to get to what I consider the more positive part. But the one thing that I do want to bring up is the basic facts of the Health Department. We have 73 different programs, so we have to account for every one of those different programs. We have 151.5 full-time equivalent staff, and that's a reduction of 2.5 from last year. We have 114 merit staff, and I'm going to talk about that later, that's in the two facilities that we have, one that's in Oakland and one that is in Grantsville. And then, the funds that we refer to as core county funds are matching funds that go with a formula that the state has, where you match the course, the core state match. And that's at different levels, it will probably be recalibrated. We don't know exactly how that's, what that's going to look like in the next few years. But the core funding that we are requesting supports these 10 different programs, we are required to match the ones that are underlined, just administration, personal health, and environmental health. But all of these programs, we budget, because they're all very, very important. Would note that Appalachian Crossroads is on there, that's because of, there is a pass-through that just comes into the Health Department and goes straight to Appalachian Crossroads. So, next slide, Kevin. And so, this is the, and just forward through, so I wanted to present this, that with, on my badge, on my badge, I have the state, or I have the county on one side. When I go down to the state, I turn it over, and I have the state on the other side, because we are state employees. And so, because of that, our biggest cost, which is salaries for the state, it is uncontrolled. We don't have a control over, over payment. And so, this year, there is an increase in our salary going forward of $575,000. 3% of that was with COLA and STEP increases. Over the last few years, the state has been doing that, really since COVID-19. There were a lot of years where there were no COLA or STEP increases, and so they've tried to make that up, and so it's increased each, each year over the last three or four years. Our environmental health specialists will receive an additional 12% increase of our licensed staff, which includes counselors and nurses and nurse practitioners. They, they have all been recalibrated over the past few years, but the environmental health specialists were left behind, and those are very technical positions. And quite frankly, if they didn't get this 12% increase, then we probably, every one of those individuals would be working for Garrett County Public Schools in the next few years, because they are math and science people. They are math and science people, so. And then, our employee and retiree health insurance is increasing by $167,535. So, Kevin, next slide. So, the state budget fortunately does increase, includes some increases in funding to assist covering some of those cost increases, but we don't know exactly what that allocation is going to be from the state. We take our best guess, that's where we talk about the merry-go-round going up and down, and it's like, okay, this is what we think it's going to be. We hope we're right, but it could be wrong. So, the next, next slide. Now, this is the one where it could, where we thought it was going up and it went down. DBM approved a collective bargaining unit agreements after the, after the budget submission that included a deal to make all employees working more than 20 hours a week merit staff and be eligible for... that included a deal to make all employees working more than twenty hours a week merit staff and be eligible for full benefits. Now, we don't know exactly how that is going to play out. But we have at least twenty employees that could fall into that category. There are some caveats that are part of that, that have to do with if the people have, those individuals, if they are in permanently funded positions or not. And so we have fee-for-service programs. What does that mean? Is it permanently funded or not? We don't know where that will fall out. We don't know about some of our grants that are renewed year to year, and some competitive grants that we will get for one, two, or three years, if those individuals will have to fall into that category. But I'm sure the union would like us to make all twenty of those individuals to go up. We don't know what that's going to be, so there could be a significant impact mid-year. I hope that doesn't happen. We're pretty confident that we can manage things. But that's one of the things that we were not aware of, and it came about at the last minute. So next slide, please. So one of the things that we do talk about, fee-for-service programs, and you'll see a pie chart in a little bit. Most health departments, there are some of us that provide fee-for-service programs. That's a significant part of our budget. We're not allowed, unlike medical offices, we can't just increase what we charge. It has to do with the medical assistance rate. And so we would, in most cases, we would say, well, we need to increase this rate in order to keep up with the staff increases, the cost increases because of nursing costs that have gone up close to forty percent over the last three years. Forty-six percent over the last three years. So that was a good career choice for people who went into nursing. And so there's, but we do believe that we'll be able to increase our collections by about four hundred and seventy thousand dollars next year. And that's due to higher production, but also some improved billing processes. You know, I'll be the first to say, you know, that sometimes we talk about what's in our wheelhouse. We're still working through that process where, you know, we are a government organization that does not usually work on a fee-for-service program and, or fee-for-service funding, and we are trying to, each year, try to improve those things, those processes, in order to collect more of the funds that are due to us. And so we've done a good job with that, bringing that up. We have five long-term employees that retired in fiscal year 2024, and they will be replaced most likely at a lower cost. Then last year, we let you know that we had a grant writer that was in the budget, that was funded partially through public health infrastructure funds that will run out in two years, three years? Three more years. But she's been able to increase the amount of competitive grants that we've received by seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, we also have to, when we do that, it's not just seven hundred and fifty thousand additional dollars. We have to provide the programming, so we have to increase our staffing, so forth for that. So the proposed budget request for fiscal year twenty-five is two point five million dollars. Two, two, five, one, two, seven, six, five. That's seventy-five thousand dollars, seventy-five thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars over the FY24 county budget. There was no increase in, from 2023 to 2024, so it was stable at that point. Kevin, so here is our budget, and if you want to look at that, you can see that in the top right-hand, kind of the noon until two o'clock position, that's our state core funds. And that's, most of that is state core, but some of it is also the state uses as a mechanism to pass along some of the increases we have for staffing. Then we have our state grants, which is the largest proportion. Federal grants is down at the bottom from about six-thirty until, you know, seven o'clock there. One point seven million dollars in federal grants. And then four, four point seven million dollars is in our fee collection. So you can see that's the second-largest funding source that we have. And then the core county is up there at the top in the dark green. If you go to the next slide, it shows you the percentages. And one more slide, because it pulls that out and shows you that that's what we're talking about here. That's what our budget request is. And so it is thirteen percent of our operating budget. And next slide, because I think that's just some considerations. We are heavily influenced by the fee-for-service programs. The budget can change during the year due to increase or decrease in collections and impacted collective bargaining agreements, as I already mentioned. And in most years, I would, and I think it's really, in the last twenty-five years, there's only been one year where we have not been able to return funds to the county at the end of the year. And we certainly want to do that, take that scenario and move forward. So, next slide. And so that is questions.
Any questions, Bob? I'll just make a comment quick. This will be your last budget presentation. So I had, Scott went back and looked over, to your point, with the tradition that started with Rodney. You are the only entity that we fund that gives us money back. We're very pleased with that and appreciative of your stewardship of the taxpayer dollars. And Bob, over your tenure, the Health Department has given back to the county two point eight million dollars that we've been able to reallocate to other things. And that is a testament to all of your guys' fiduciary responsibility, and we're all very thankful for that. So, thank you.
You're very welcome, and I had a good teacher. And I will also say that we, there will be coming back from this, from, actually, it's from the fiscal year 2023. It has not been reconciled yet, but we know that there will be a nice sum to come back.
We appreciate that, thank you. All right, thanks a lot, Bob. And last, but certainly not least, is the Garrett County Board of Education.
We're not giving money back. We have asked Dr. Miller to join me. And Gloria, our new finance director, to join us on this presentation. And I would like to acknowledge, we have three board members with us today. We have our vice president of the board, Mr. Claude Kelly. We have Mr. Josh Heimball with us, and we have Sadie Liller, our newest board member with us. And I appreciate you being with us. My voice is a little off. I apologize. It's a pollen thing. But the weather is beautiful, so we'll take that. Also, there are a couple of our staff members here in the audience, and I appreciate them being here. Jane Rich to join us for this presentation, and we'll get started. So I want to thank you for providing the school system an opportunity to highlight our budget initiatives. It is certainly an honor to come before you as the superintendent representing an excellent school system. We will start, we are tag-teaming this a little bit, so Kevin, if you could go to the next slide. We will have Dr. Miller highlight some of the budget initiatives with her education program. And, excuse me, I will say before she starts, I like the merry-go-round analogy. We certainly feel much the same way as we look at the budget. Right now, as we present numbers and initiatives, I want to emphasize that we're still in negotiations with our different employee groups, so salaries and benefits have not been set quite yet. We also are still working with preliminary numbers from the State Department of Education. And just a couple of weeks ago, those numbers changed. Hopefully, those will be finalized soon. So what we're presenting you tonight are our best estimates at this particular time. Dr. Miller?
Okay. So as we think of initiatives that have been highlighted in this year's fiscal twenty-five budget, we are looking at expanding and enhancing our academic opportunities for students, which is the business that we're in. One area that we're being very mindful about is looking at our early childhood education programming that is certainly in direct alignment with the blueprint and really having early interventions for students. So we are looking at continuing universal pre-K four programming for all of our four-year-olds that are four years old by September first, that we would be providing that to any four-year-old who wants to come to Garrett County Public Schools. That is unique. That's not what's happening in all counties across the state, and we want to be able to continue that for our communities. We're also looking at expanding our three-year-old opportunities for children who are eligible based on tiered income. And that, we are doing very thoughtfully with our Head Start partners and working towards meeting the needs of those who are interested and eligible in that area. As far as post-CCR opportunities for our students, CCR stands for College and Career Readiness. And as part of the blueprint, we are to have post-college and career readiness pathways. And you can see some of those highlighted here. Mr. Edwards has been working on expanding our CTE opportunities by looking at the Maryland Fire and Rescue Institute. We're also looking at continuing our support in the apprenticeship program, which is currently in its first year of existence, we'll say. And so we need to invest in keeping that program going and keeping that program growing and strong. So that is important. And then for our advanced placement opportunities going into next year, we'll be offering AP seminar for the first time. That is in alignment with the Capstone Diploma for Advanced Placement. And also working with do-enrollment opportunities for our students. Mr. Edwards is working with WVU for do-enrollment opportunity for agricultural coursework in our high schools, as well as Allegheny Community College for Culinary Arts and Auto Mechanics. So those are all expansions that we're lifting up and trying to continue as we move forward. The science and math curriculum, instructional materials that are on the screen here, those are big investments that we are looking to include in our fiscal twenty-five budget. Both of them are for instructional materials K through twelve, which is a significant piece of the budget. Dance is a new initiative that we have been working towards trying to implement for several years. A dance opportunity for our high school students in the area of fine arts. And we are very happy to be able to move forward with that next year. That certainly also does come with the cost of standing up a new program with both space and supplies and materials and equipment that are necessary to do that. So we're excited to be able to offer that to students. And then intervention, we're looking at rethinking how we're approaching intervention to also include talented and gifted as part of that programming as we're exiting some of our federal funding. Next slide. And then also, we're lifting up social emotional being for our students. So in our current projected plan, we're looking at enhanced coordinated service, student service plan, which would include looking at two full-time school psychologist positions, as well as an increase to student service positions overall, and then implementing a behavioral health screener, which is required by the blueprint, but also is gonna be really good practice for ensuring that we're meeting the needs of our students, both mental health and behavioral health. That also goes along with the acronym MTSS program. That stands for Multi-Tierred System of Support, which is essential to have in place to ensure that the needs of students are met at all levels. One area that I would highlight as far as community schools, and the blueprint references them as community of poverty schools, but we have been adopting them as community schools. That is restricted funding that is attached to poverty rates in our community. And this first year is our first stab at a community school with Yacht Glades. They've done a fantastic job of completing a needs assessment. So they kind of pioneered our path there with community school. It does come with a restricted funding source, that a hundred percent of that funding source does have to be spent at that school. So Yacht Glades has been our pioneer. We are projecting four more schools to be added. And you can see the schools on the slide. And you'll see this when you look at our budget numbers under concentration of poverty funding. It's around one point two million, I believe, this is the last time I looked at it. And all of that one point two million has to be spent at the schools that are identified. It is not flexible funding, but it does provide very intentional resources to those schools and the families that they serve. And the last thing I'll speak about before turning it back over is the initiative to stand up a grades five through twelve alternative classroom, and that would be at our Denet Road site. And this classroom is really designed to support an alternative for students in lieu of long-term suspension, as well as just certain circumstances that come up that it may be appropriate for students to be in an alternative setting. This would be an option. What it is not is a replacement of our Stars Behavioral Classroom, which is our most intensive program for students with the most intense needs. So it is an addition to the continuum that we offer our students as we work through situations that need alternatives. So I'll pass it back over to you.
Excellent. Thank you. So as we look at this, and as we've been working through this school year and this current fiscal year budget, a couple of things that I want to bring to the commissioner's attention. We have been paying a lot of attention, enhanced attention to being both efficient and effective. So in that regard, and we don't really have much choice in some of this. The federal funds that we had during COVID days are leaving us by the end of September. That will be gone, and that was about thirteen million that we had added to our budget for a period of time. So we have looked very carefully this year at different positions and are looking at positions as we go into next year. We have, at this point in time, reduced our positions by about thirty-four positions in the county. We've done that through attrition. We've had retirements, people needing to leave for different reasons. Whenever that occurs, we look very carefully at the position to see if we can't meet the needs of our students and the needs of the system in different ways. So we are trying to, what I consider being right sizing our staff. We're to the point that I think we're about right sized. Thirty-four positions is a lot of positions for the system to lose, but we will continue to look at those. The other thing that we've done to help us in future budget years and our planning process, we have established some staffing guidelines so that we can look at a school ahead of time, look at the student population. As you know, we do have some declining student population. This year, it was pretty minimal. It was like maybe forty students spread throughout the county. But we look at each school, and we have some staffing guidelines in place to help us look at, how many teachers should we have? How many administrators should we have? How many custodians? How many custodians should we have? And all of that is very helpful to us as we do our budget planning. I know through the blueprint, you've heard about weighted student funding. You've also heard from me how problematical I think that can be at times. We just recently, finally, in my mind, received some guidance from the state about what that should look like. We will be layering that onto our staffing guidelines as we move forward. So that may lead us to add some staff at different locations. We also have, Dr. Miller has worked very hard with her staff in some curricular planning so that we can even that out over time. Looking forward, I think we did a five-year plan so that over the next five years, we have sort of advanced notice of how much money we're going to need to budget for things like science textbooks and math textbooks. And we're looking at that being around $600,000 a year. And I'm sure that will increase with inflation over the five years. Next slide, please. If it's working?
Hold on.
If not, I know the Commissioners have it in front of them.
There you go.
And there it is. Thank you, Kevin. So in addition to that, I just want to touch on capital for just a moment. You know, and this is really a thank you to the Commissioners for your support of our capital improvement plan next year or through this year, because we will be ready at the opening of next school year. We are completing the renovation of Southern Garrett High School so that our seventh and eighth graders will be welcomed to that school next school year. A lot of planning has gone into that, not just for the building, but for the program. And I'm very pleased that that is going so well. The other thing that you know that we're doing is we will be building the new Broadford Elementary School. We should really begin that project on July 1. Rich is right on that, and it's all going to be on schedule and ready to open the following school year. And again, it is because of the Commissioner's support of our capital improvement plan that those dollars are in place. And the way you develop that plan really gives us the ability to look forward to how we should be operating the system. So thank you for that. Long-term goals in this budget year, sort of long-term and related to capital. You were gracious enough to provide funding for turf fields for each of the high schools. I think that was maybe six years ago already? Three? Well, time flies at my age. Three years ago, you provided that funding. We are endeavoring to set up a sinking fund so that when we need to replace those turf fields, we have money put aside in our budget to be able to do that. The other thing that we plan to do in this budget, we have some money coming to us that is sort of one-time money, that will not be recurring funds. And we spend about $662,000 a year on our debt service. We plan to try to not totally erase, but spin that down a little bit more quickly, giving us new funding each year that we can use for current needs. So those are a couple of long-term goals in the budget. And now, I think it is, I don't know whether everyone on the County Commission has met Gloria Smith. Gloria is our new Director of Finance. She has proven to be a very quick learner. She came from business to school funding work in lots of different pots of money that she has had to learn all of the rules with, but has been doing a fantastic job. So she's going to do the numbers.
Good evening. As you can see, and as Dr. McCartney mentioned earlier, this is preliminary state funding at this point. The state allocation is a total of $25.3 million. That's relatively flat, if you remember last year's funding, but you'll see that clearer on the next slide when we get to that. One thing with the state funding that I'll mention, the foundation amount is about $1.2 million less in fiscal '25 than it was in fiscal '24. And the reason is they moved $1.3 million, or up to $1.3 million, into the Concentration of Poverty Restricted Fund that Dr. Miller mentioned in her presentation. So they have taken, I guess, some discretionary money that we could move around how we saw fit and put it in the restricted program, which is just for those community schools going forward. Last year, that amount for Yacht Glades was $273,000. This year, we have about $1.4 million going into fiscal '25 to cover five schools. On the local appropriation, that total is now up to $30.7 million for fiscal '25. The original estimate from the state was about $29.8 million. But just recently, they sent out an update and said we got another $871,000 that's appropriated from the county. And that was based on some calculations that they had made to adjust that. And I did find your $30, Scott.
Glad you found that $30.
Yes. Well, we debated on who was going to get that, but he was right, so we got the $30. So thank you for that. One thing you'll note too on the next slide, you don't really see it here, but the portion of, the percentage of the county versus the state has changed. There's been a shift of about 2% to the local in fiscal '25. So the state portion is going down. And they're looking for more funding to come from local sources moving forward. And I would expect that trend to continue as we move forward. Trying to see if there's anything else on this that might be of importance to you. We'll say that the two areas that we got increased funding in were the special education, we got an extra $618,000 appropriation total. And in our pre-K, as Dr. Miller discussed, we're expanding that program. We got $555,000 increase in that over a year. You can go to the next slide now, please. Here you can see a comparison from fiscal year '24 to '25. Again, the state share looks flat. I mean, in total, it is, but there was that $1.2 million shift from unrestricted to restricted there. And you'll see the local appropriation, of course, has gone up about $1.8, almost $2 million between the years. The state funding was 47% in fiscal '24, now it's only 45%, whereas the local funding has gone up from 53% to 55% for fiscal '25. So that is all that I have, unless you have any questions on that. Again, it's preliminary, so as we get final numbers, it may change. But we're just unsure at this point in time.
Thank you. So the final slide, the bottom line, is that for our operating budget next year, we are asking for support for, at the minimum, local appropriation level of $30.6 million. Our capital budget, we're not asking for anything additional because you've already allocated those funds to us or earmarked them in some way. And again, we're very appreciative of that. That helps a lot with the planning. And I would say, as we're looking at the operating budget, some of those increases, most of those increases are driven by the blueprint. They are things that we are mandated to do. Some of those are salary increases. And as I said earlier, we are still negotiating our contracts. And I would also say that, in my mind, I think the salaries that the blueprint is asking us to offer to our teaching staff are reasonable and that our staff, it will allow us to be competitive in hiring and filling positions as we go forward. This year, as I said, we are asking to stay at our minimal local funding. We're able to do that because we have been looking at efficiencies. We have been looking at reducing staff where it is reasonable to do so. We are looking next year to use some of our carryover monies, fund balance money to help with our budget for next year. I just want to highlight for the Commissioners that while I am confident if our preliminary numbers stay, that we will be fine for next year at the minimum level, I'm not sure about the following year. So I just want to put that out now, that for next year, minimum level of funding as required, we believe that we can operate well. And then we'll see what the next year brings. I will answer questions. Don't ask me anything hard, Mr. Edwards.
I won't ask you any questions, but I'll make a couple of comments. One, I'll just reiterate what I mentioned to the college. And Gloria, this is more for you, and I know you're new. And I don't know what the rules of engagement are anymore on one-time, non-recurring costs. But in your CFO meetings or whatever, it may be something you might want to check in on because I personally believe there's an avenue here we can look into. I know maintenance of effort's a little different now because of the way they compute things, probably why they changed one-time, non-recurring. But if there's a way that we can finance some things that won't become recurring cost for the taxpayers, that makes it a lot more palatable. So I would just encourage you to look into that. But I'll also say, when we look at this operating budget, and you're right, it is what it is. You're asking for the minimum. That's what we're, obviously, we have to fund because the law says we do. But it underscores the conversation we've been having now for five years of what blueprint looks like in reality. Even though this is the minimum, it's $1.8 million more than what was given last year. And Scott, I'll give kudos to Scott and his team. They were within about $50,000 bucks of projecting what that's going to be. And next year, we're looking at probably $2.8. So that number continues to escalate in significant numbers for Garrett County, for anybody, but specifically for us in particular, that in two years, it's going to be over $4 million in additional spending that's mandated. And so we have to do that. But when we talk about revenue and we talk about budget allocations from a county perspective, we have to account for that. So it does make the conversation difficult when you're looking at other groups that you don't necessarily have to fund by state mandate and how we allocate those resources. I would just encourage everyone, and this is a broad statement, not necessarily for the Board of Ed, but you know, anyone that's paying attention, when we get to the budgets, is to be involved and be, you know, there's going to be some tough decisions moving forward over the next three, four, five, nine years, that blueprint's in play, that the college is facing their cuts. You know, the cost of doing roads isn't getting any cheaper, minimum wage is going up. There's a lot of escalating things, and it behooves the general citizen to be engaged in the conversation of where those scarce resources should be allocated. And, you know, all of them very worthy causes, but there has to be a conversation about it. But I do appreciate, and I live it every day, so I can speak to it, the sacrifices the boards make. And I think it's easy to say, well, we're giving you $2 million more. But there's, the cost of the board are escalating as well. And the restrictions placed on how that money can be spent is different than it was in years past also. So again, I'll reiterate what I said earlier. It's good to have a good working relationship, that we can try to meet these problems together rather than adversarial, and I appreciate that. I know these guys do too. And we'll continue to work together the best we can to do what we need to do for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And we do appreciate the support.
All right. That wraps it up. For those of you that are still awake, thanks for coming.